Good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, November 22. The time is 9:31 a.m. And if we can begin our morning, this morning, with a moment of silence for the victims in Colorado Springs. Okay, thank you, everybody. Erica, can you start the roll call vote this morning?
Commissioner Henry?
I guess I'm here. I'm told I can't poke the bear today. So, yes, I'm here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter? Commissioner Tedesco?
Okay, if everyone could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, next item on our agenda is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And the motion passes three to zero. We do not have any awards and presentations this morning. Erica, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do not.
Is there any elected officials communication? Commissioner Odoricio?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to, our hearts are hurting today and this week because of the situation down in Colorado Springs. As we move forward, unfortunately, Colorado has a series of these in the history of our great state. And as we move forward with finding solutions, I just pray that we stay together, we work together, and we try to address the issues that we know we need to address. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will just add to the Commissioner's remarks that Adams County that we are deeply saddened this morning. And while details are still emerging, we as Adams County strongly condemn the acts of hatred and wholeheartedly stand with the LGBTQ A-plus community. As we all grieve this senseless tragedy, no one should feel unsafe to celebrate or live authentically in public. Not one more life should be taken or lost here in Colorado, and that when one Colorado resident is hurt, that we all hurt with them. I commend the Colorado Springs first responders, law enforcement, and the courageous Club Q community, and those who work swiftly to stop the violence. The Board of County Commissioners issued a press release this morning. I've also reached out as the Chair, along with the Board of County Commissioners, to Mayor Southers in Colorado Springs, and also to the El Paso County Commissioners, to extend our condolences and our support for their community. So, moving on in our agenda, I can have the motion for the consent
So moved.
And the motion passes three to zero this morning. And we are on to new business. County Manager Noel Bernal.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have several budget items today, so Mark with Finance will take on the first four items. The first one we have is the resolution approving expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for Adams County, State of Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2023 and ending on the last day of December 2023. Mark.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Osborne, Deputy Budget Director for Adams County. In public hearing on November 1st, 2022, we presented the 2023 proposed budget to you and the residents of Adams County for review. In accordance with state statute, and so residents have had the opportunity for public comment and input, notice of this public hearing was published in the North Glen-Thorton Sentinel on November 17, 2022. The 2023 proposed revenues are $681,393,458. The 2023 proposed expenditures are $719,282,203. The overall use of fund balance is $37,888,745, with capital and one-time projects totaling $86,641,566. In the general fund, the use of fund balance is $16,944,190, with $19,992,595 in capital and one-time projects. These show that Adams County is following the fund balance policy established by the Board of County Commissioners and using fund balance for only capital and one-time projects. Adams County is not using fund balance for daily operations. Today, we are presenting four resolutions shown on your public hearing agenda under new business. Item one will adopt the 2023 budget by fund. Item two will appropriate the 2023 sums of money to various funds. Item three will approve the Adams County fee schedule for 2023. And item four will approve the 2023 certification of mill levies. The proposed 2023 mill levy for Adams County is 26.967 mills, which includes an abatement mill levy of 0.188. The county's gross assessed valuation is $10,296,88,290. The total amount budgeted for property taxes in 2023 is $262,833,416. The Board of County Commissioners also certifies other property tax entities within the county, however assumes no liability or responsibility for these districts. There are, they are, these are certified to Adams County by the districts, and the county compiles them to report to the state. At this time, I'd like to answer any questions you may have, or invite any public comment that may be in the audience.
Great, thank you, Mark. Any questions from the board? Any members of the public that would like to speak to these matters, items one through four? Not seeing any. So Doug, you want a motion for each item individually?
I think it's a cleaner way to do it. I don't know if it's required, but it is, I think, just cleaner.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Mark.
Madam Chair, I will, I'll do the series of motions, and we can do it one at a time, it sounds like. Move to approve, resolution approving expenditures and revenues for each fund and adopting a budget for Adams County, State of Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2023, ending on the last day of December 2023. Next, Madam Chair, do you need to announce that it passed? Okay. Move to approve resolution appropriating sums of money for the various funds and the amounts for the purposes set forth below, for the County of Adams, State of Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2023, ending on the last day of December 2023.
You need to push the button.
Got it. Next, I move to approve, and that approved, move to approve resolution approving Adams County 2023 fee schedule for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2023 and ending on the last day of December 2023. And that passes as well. So on the fourth one, move to approve resolution approving certification of mill levies for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2023, ending on the last day of December 2023. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mark, and thank you to our finance team and the county manager for putting this together. I know these motions go very quickly, but we've been working on the budget since, as a board, since early October, but I know the staff across the county has been working on this since the early spring. So, thank you so much, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you from, on behalf of the budget team, to the Commissioners, the executive leadership team, the department directors, elected officials, and all their staff that contributed to the process this year. And specifically, I'd like to thank the team missing today is Nancy Duncan, although she's here with us in spirit, and probably watching from home, so. Hi, Nancy. And the rest of the budget team, Mark Luth, Tim Nagedlow, Purnell Olson, Ellie McLean, and then Nikki Blair, so.
Could the team please stand and be recognized by the board, and thank you for your efforts? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
We have item number five, a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Almost Home Incorporated in the amount of $928,085.10 for severe weather action plan services. And Paolo Diaz will be here to present.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's a long walk down. I'm Paolo Diaz. I'm in our Community Safety Well-Being Department, and I want to thank you guys for your continued support of the severe weather activation program that we have here in Adams County. We did go out to bid this past summer, and we received one applicant, which is Almost Home, who has been an incredible partner for us in making sure that this program is delivered to our residents. And so, we're excited to continue to work with Almost Home to continue working on this program. Since October 2020, we've averted over 16,000 nights of homelessness. And our most important statistic is last winter, we had zero deaths caused by severe weather due to cold weather, so we're excited about that. As we continue to move this program forward, we do have some changes coming up this year. One is we're going completely paperless, especially in our work with our hotels, which has allowed us to improve our efficiency. Another is we have increased our number of hotels. Two years ago, we only worked with four hotels. Last year, we worked with six hotels. This year, we'll be working with 12 hotels. And I think what that allows us to do is it effectively ensures that every resident who contacts us, we are able to, hopefully, be able to get them a room and not run out of rooms at 1:00 in the afternoon, which has historically happened. We've also expanded this into the city and county in Broomfield, where they will be subsidizing and helping pay for some of their residents to sleep in the hotels over there through the severe weather activation program. And now, we're also increasing our participation through the, in partnership with Human Services and the TANF program, and making sure that we also pay for those residents as well. So, honestly, through the help of the internal and external partners, we're able to continue swap, which has been very beneficial because I think we've been activated for about a week and a half, two weeks straight, due to the severe cold weather. So, opening it up to questions for you guys, but thank you for your support.
Thank you, Paolo. Questions from the board?
I have a question. Can't figure out how to raise my stupid hand, so.
Raise your real hand. Commissioner Henry?
Wait, wait. See, it's not just me. Okay, I feel better. Where?
Raise your hand.
Yeah. See, it's not just me. So, last year, I heard some concerns in regards to, in Thornton and North Glen, about Almost Homes and people not being able to, that they weren't actually in that area near, I think it was the libraries where they were holding up, because of the weather. Are we going to be able to address that this time around?
Yeah, so, two years ago, thank you for that. Two years ago, we used to have intake locations, and it was over at the library. But one of the things that we've been able to do as we continue to go paperless, is we have developed an online platform called SWAP. It is an app that a lot of our outreach navigators are able to use. So, our staff members in Adams County, City of North Glen, City of Thornton, City of Commerce City, City of Westminster, they can actually reach out to the residents specifically, go to the residents, connect them to a hotel voucher, so nobody has to go to an intake location. We do still have an intake location available, but it's not used as often as it has been historically, just because we have been able, thanks to SWAP, we have been able to deploy those vouchers out. And consequently, too, one of the innovations that we've developed with this program is it runs in concert with our transportation program through the Lyft program. So, we are now able to, those outreach navigators can reach out to the residents, connect them to a voucher, and then deploy a ride for them to get them to the hotel and back.
Wow, that is incredible. Good job, thank you.
Madam Chair, with that, unless... I move to approve as presented.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Paolo.
Thank you.
Item six, a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Huttick Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $23,462,475.19 for construction services for the York Street Phase II East 78th Avenue to East 88th Avenue project. And Brian Staley is with us.
Good morning, board. And thank you for your time and consideration on this exciting next step in the York Street Phase II project. Our recommendation to award this construction contract is the culmination of years of work which started in 2018 and proceeded through an extraordinarily challenging time in the world. When complete, this project will bring a new traffic signal, street lighting, curb gutter and sidewalk facilities, new box culverts for adjacent drainage ditches, and safety enhancements to the York Street corridor from 78th Avenue to 88th Avenue. I'd like to thank the well-being neighborhood community members for their partnership through the design and right-of-way acquisition phases of this project, as well as our right-of-way agents, Marissa Hilgi and Rob Girk, our right-of-way supervisor, Ian Cortez, CIP manager, Renee Valdez, and project manager, most especially project manager Jennifer Shi, who has juggled all of the moving pieces of this project, for all of their efforts on this project. Additionally, our partners at the North Washington Water and Sanitation District and Xcel Energy, who will be key contributors to the success of this project. After a competitive bid process coordinated by our purchasing team, the Public Works team recommends awarding this construction contract to Huttick Excavating, Inc., for $23.4 million, and we look forward to seeing this project fully constructed in 2025.
Board.
None, I don't have any questions, but if we have, you're open for a motion to move to approve as presented.
Thank you for your presentation. Motion passes three to zero.
And finally, we have a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and CCS Facility Services in the amount of $1,403,639 for custodial and carpet cleaning services. Mr. Bowman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, I'm Jeff Bowman, Deputy Director, Facilities and Fleet Management. This morning, I'm presenting Resolution Seven, recommending the approval of an agreement between Adams County and CCS Facility Services in the amount of $1,403,639 for custodial and carpet cleaning services. This recommendation follows a thorough evaluation of six RFP proposals opened on September 12. Proposals were evaluated on ability to meet scope of work, references, overall qualifications, and price. With numerous county facilities over our wide geographical area, custodial and carpet services must be supplemented beyond what the county's internal EBS staff can provide. For reference, some of the 28 buildings included in this agreement are South Platte Crossing, the Detention Facility, Colorado Air and Spaceport, Strasburg Service Center, and the Animal Shelter. This resolution will combine county carpet cleaning services and county custodial together. Previously, carpet services were a separate contract requiring additional oversight and occasional duplication of work. With the help from Renee Peterson with our procurement team and EBS supervisor April Van Beest, carpet and custodial are combined to create a more efficient process for carpet and floorwork. The evaluation team of three facility staff, one manager from motor vehicles, and one procurement specialist reviewed and interviewed the final three proposals, proposers, and unanimously agreed that CCS Facility Services is the most responsive and responsible proposer, and we recommend that CCS be awarded the new custodial and carpet contract in the amount of $1,403,639. Are there any questions?
Great, thank you, Jeff. Questions from the board?
Doesn't look like it.
Madam Chair, move to approve as presented.
The motion passes three, zero. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Noel. All right, on to the county attorney.
It looks like we have an afternoon of discussing litigation here. First thing up is a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to CRS 246424B. Let's also add in subsection E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the treasurer litigation.
My favorite topic.
Move to approve.
I voted.
Passes three, zero. Go ahead, Doug, thank you.
Next up, another fun case, a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to CRS 246424B and E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the Coats
Move to approve.
Passes three to zero. And the last one.
And last on our agenda here, a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to CRS 246424B and E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the grabbing bear case.
So moved.
The motion passes three, zero. Thank you, Doug. All right, we don't have any land use hearings today. We have a lot of people in the audience. Hello, Sheriff? McReggernborn? Do you have something for us? No. Just a spectator. And we have former council member Mark Humbert here. Good to see you, Mark. I don't see him.
He's way over there.
There he is. Good morning, Sheriff-elect Gene Claps, also with us this morning. So, with no other items on our agenda, I want to wish everyone a very safe and happy Thanksgiving week, weekend. Enjoy your time off, and we'll see you later this week. Thank you. So, we are adjourned this morning at 9:53 a.m. So, we're adjourned this morning at 9:53 a.m.